Hi, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the bill with liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
Good evening. Is there anyone here for public input? Anyone for public input? All right, review and approve council agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
I would like to make a change. I would like to take D and E and add it, let's see, am I right?
D and E from the consent agenda.
And the consent agenda under
Six A.
A and the regular agenda items as separate items.
Is that amendment or?
Just an order. It could kind of.
Okay, I'll move to approve as amended.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items. Item A, approve four fifteen twenty-four local board of appeals and equalization meeting minutes. Item B, approve four fifteen twenty-four council meeting minutes. Item C, approve five six twenty-four council meeting minutes. Item F, approve temporary public works, workers. Item G, approve transferring local board of appeals and equalization to open book. And item H, approve electrical inspections contract.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Ken's second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Regular items, uh, well, it's, I don't know which, how you want to do them. I guess there's a whole bunch of them, so.
Do you want to?
Well, the only reason I wanted to move those is because I think it's time to have a discussion about this, what's going on with our additional animal agenda for the people. Originally, when we went to this, we kind of maxed it out as a third rather than two dog or two animals in a residence. Tonight, we have
Free request.
Two items asking for additional, which would make one item a four item, a four animal. And the next E was
Three.
Three dogs. You know, we were kind, and I think we've been pretty forthgiving to having three animals. But, you know, we're starting to getting into a lot more. And how many do we know that probably have a lot more than three or four animals at a location? What do we do? I mean, when you start getting above three or four animals per residence, do we keep track of complaints? Do we know how these animals are being taken care of, those types of things? I, I don't know. Um, is it time for us to review our ordinance to see what needs to be done? To help with this kind of problem?
You have, you have three requests, just to verify. You have one that's requesting three dogs.
Yeah, the last one is.
Another one that's requesting four indoor cats, and then the third one is requesting seven dogs. Normally, the request is, you can have a combination of three animals, no more than two dogs and a cat or three cats. You can have something like that. That's normally what it is.
Don't.
That's normally what the ordinance is. But I will say that over the course of the last years, the council has, has approved additional ones, and then they're required to come to you for any additional requests of that. And I do agree that it is probably time, and we've talked about that internally, about reviewing that ordinance, to really look at what do we really want to allow? And so, um, yeah, that's a bit bigger discussion. I think that we can certainly bring some of that back, but you still do have these three action items that you'll have to consider, but yeah, to your point.
Kennel license. We have a kennel license.
We do. Sean, I know I'm looking at you and you're like, oh, great.
All of a sudden, I see seven animals. I mean, that's.
Our kennel license, I believe, applies for four more animals.
Kennel license is, excuse me, um, um, for facilities that board animals overnight. It's not, it's not oriented towards residential properties. It, it, the ordinance is a little bit, they don't necessarily line up totally the way licenses are, our kennels require license, but when we talk about the ordinance, they, they're referenced as kind of animal boarding facilities, not necessarily kennels. They're, they're not aligned perfectly.
What? Are, are you the people with the seven animals? Pardon me?
Yes, I am.
Can you come to microphone, please? Says in your letter that they're, they, they consist of service task-trained animals as well as emergent emotional service animals. What does that mean?
Um, so three of our dogs, which I have letters for all of them, are trained to, um, sorry. I just get very emotional because it's not just dogs to me. They're my family. They, they help me medically. I've had arthritis since I was very, very little. And vision issues and social issues and all of the above. And I have three that I have trained personally and with other trainers to make sure that they, they push me out of bed. They bring me chairs when I can't stand any longer. They help me walk if I can't walk any longer. That's what a service charass trained dog is. Um, they, they're, they're meant to be public dogs, but I don't see the reason for it. Especially since my husband does join me most of the things out in public. Uh, so it's mostly when we're like, we go to the park and if we're at our home and I just need that extra support, they're, they're there. Uh, with emotional service animals, it's not just for me, it's also for him. They, um, they're really in tune with us since we've had them for so long and since we've gone through such a rocky, um, past with them. I'm sorry, I apologize. It's, it's been, um, emotional service animals are meant to help with your emotional wellbeing and your emotional help. Some people see it as a cat, some people see it as guinea pigs, some people see it even as horses. But I see it as my dogs. They, they get me out of bed in the morning. They help me when I'm in my lowest to make sure that they're outside and that they are getting the treatment that they deserve.
Are these dogs mostly in the house?
Um, so we have a fenced in yard, um, as well as an electric collar system, uh, to make sure that they are able to be inside, outside, obviously. They go out every, if we're not, if we're at home, every three hours. They're rarely out inside. We have statements from the neighbors saying that they've, they don't really bark. Um, we have neighbors to our right where their dog will come up to the fence line and bark, and all of ours will just look at it.
All seven of them have the collars?
Hmm?
All seven have the collar?
Um, right now, we currently have five, just because they are really expensive and we do.
Yeah, I know, I am.
Yeah. They are pretty spendy. And I am very particular on what collars I have, um, for certain dogs. So each one of them has a different collar.
Right.
And a different, um, maximum level and a different depth level. Like, one of our labs has a one that he can go all the way in the woods and comes back at a single beep. Or he can go five miles in the lake and comes back with a single beep. Um, most of them don't have a shock on them. And if they do have a shock on them, it's very, very not used. They're great dogs.
Okay.
I'm, I'm curious, um, can you tell me about the dogs, um, sizes of the dogs and?
Um, so our biggest, I believe, is a German shepherd. He's at seventy pounds, seventy-five pounds. Um, and then we have, hold on, there's one. We have a little, little one that's about twenty-five pounds. And then I have two which are at forty-five pounds that are healers. Um, and then we have two more that, or three more that are at the about, I'd say fifty-five, sixty-five pound range.
And you have letters from your neighbors?
I have them on my phone, yes. We have one that's on his phone from the back side.
How many, how many letters from your neighbors do you have?
Just two.
Just two?
Yeah.
How many neighbors do you have? Two on each side of you?
Two on each side.
There's other, I mean, there are other neighbors, but.
I did reach out to our neighbors, and one just sent me a text message saying that they don't bother us, but you need to talk to your landlord. And then another one never replied. But he's told us personally that he's never had an issue with them. And they, they quite literally don't leave the yard. I try my best to not let them leave the yard. We have an eight-foot fence in place because I do know one of them used to be a jumper when we rescued him. And so we've taken extra precaution to make sure that he knows that it's not good to run, um, and he's loved in our household.
Can you forward those letters to our city staff?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, I can applaud what you're doing. Excuse me. But at the same time, um, have you ever worked with trying to get these dogs placed with other people or, uh?
I have.
People in need that are looking for something of that type?
I have, yes. Um, these dogs came to us, uh, when their homes gave up on them and we were in a tr- I, I have a training certificate and everything like that. And he's been through the business with me as well, that we trained them and they just never found their forever home, but we obviously became their forever home because I've had each one of them for at least two to four years. It's not like I haven't tried in, within those two to four years to separate myself from them. They just became my family. I can't physically have kids, so these are my kids.
Counsel, you got any other questions for?
I guess I would and I'll just try to get rid of some of these real quick.
I'm open to any questions.
I would be okay with passing E as a separate item off of the agenda, uh.
You have.
Item E?
You have D and E.
Right, but you want them separate.
Yep.
Right, but do you want to deal with this one first?
Yeah, let's deal with this one because this one is.
Want to deal with this one first?
Yeah, they're here.
I was just trying to get rid of it in case anybody had. I, okay. I don't know what to say.
I, I think, I.
It's a very hard decision on my behalf because of the amount of animals, uh, in a single-family home. I'm assuming that's what it is, correct?
It's a three-bedroom with a full basement, a backyard and bathroom. And it's just the, me and him, no kids.
Chief, chief, have we, have we had any complaints over there?
Um, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I can pull the address real quick and get back to you though.
Okay. My other concern is, uh, the cleanliness. Uh, I've gone for a walk this spring and found a whole lot of dog stuff on the sidewalks and the boulevard and stuff, which Public Works or Police did actually send somebody over there and they actually did clean it up.
Not talking about yours, but just generally.
No, not yours. Not yours.
Our, our yard does get a little messy if they tear up toys. I get it.
Not yours. Not yours. Not yours. Not yours. So, it was taken care of. I just want to make sure that that's.
Yes.
I've been in yards already when.
Our, our yard does get a little messy with trash bags because I am cleaning fluff-up constantly. I am cleaning whatever fluff toy they just destroyed that week constantly. They recently just destroyed two beds because they were very upset with me. I didn't, it was raining out and they wanted to be outside, so they, they were very upset about it. Um, and so like we have, I used to have trash bags back there and now we've worked out a system of where we have, um, like a s- I have it on order. I just haven't gotten the full refill yet, but we have like kennel supply cleaner that we clean out all their kennels with at least once or twice a week. They, the floor gets mopped at least, I want to say, four times a day when I'm home. Um, the, the house is pretty decently cleaned. Lived in, but clean.
I'm more concerned about outside for.
Outside? We, I've shoveled up all of the trash in one corner and it's in like a separate bin when it's shoveled up, yeah.
I think the biggest concern that, that they're expressing is really just to try to make sure that the impact of having that many animals isn't, yes, on other properties.
No, I, we are, we work really hard to keep our yard clean, um, just and keep them inside of the yard and all types of things. I mean, we may not have grass growing on the one side of the yard because they run that side, but that's probably about it.
I think this is going to be one of the toughest things to pass or vote or come up with. Really, that we've had in a long time due to the fact of the number. The number is quite high. Our ordinance allows up to three with permission from the council.
I can tell you, and I can't remember that, recall the numbers, um, but I know when there has been some that it's been more excessive than what the city would allow or like to have allowed. We've allowed them to keep them till they've, till they're no longer.
In existence.
In existence, or they've been able to be. So you have that as an option if that's something that you're wanting to consider.
In other words, you can't replace one that, that you, that gets, that gets sick and ill, one that, one that you found somebody a new owner for and they take it? You can't, you can't, you can't get down to six and then come back to seven?
Yes. Our goal is, and within the next year, year and a half, we just did get married last year, so finances have been a little tight with buying a house, but our, our plan is to buy land in the next year to two years. It's not like we're living in Wake Park forever. It's just a rental that would only accept our animals on, we were homeless. Like, we were homeless, about to separate, and this lovely woman came out of the woodworks and said, you don't have to separate your family, you can come live here. And we're trying, and I really don't want to see my family separated.
Counsel, your wishes.
One question for you.
Of course.
Hopefully, this'll. If we would allow you to do this, Rick had mentioned if one happens to be deceased or you find an owner for somebody, we will no longer go up to seven. We'll only allow you to have what you have at the time.
Yes.
If we would happen to stop over sometime and find that there is more than what you say, we would then, I would assume, have to get with the Humane Society and those animals will be removed? Do you understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Chief, have you found anything?
When did you guys move into that property?
I think October.
Yeah, there's been no animal calls since that time.
Okay, thank you.
Would you agree to something like that if we would allow this to go on?
Yeah, the only thing about the visits is I obviously have to make sure that they're all safe.
Pardon me?
Uh, if you did visit, it would have to, I would hope to have like a couple-hour notice.
Yeah.
Just because, like, to get them settled in their kennels.
I'm just saying, if we would happen, I mean.
You could, you could base it off of complaints is really what it is. We're not going to come to people's.
The only way we come to visit is if we get complaints.
We don't typically make it a point to go to people's houses to verify those things.
No, I'm just adding it in there.
I'm just saying, because I know there's like, a thing where like, people are scared of dogs. There's a lot of dogs. So I try my best to make sure that they are either kennelled up or on their e-collars or outside when somebody comes into the household.
The biggest thing is just to be a good neighbor.
Yes.
Making sure that respectful of those that, you know, live around you.
We're constantly asking is if they're being too loud, are they too messy, or is it upsetting your dogs? It's a, it's a constant conversation.
So to have that ability to, to be able to, you know, to consider allowing you to do that, but also making sure that those around you aren't being impacted.
Yes.
I also, I, I want to stress that we have to be sure that these animals are well-cared for.
Yes.
And they have a great environment.
Yes, they do.
And they're being fed and regular shots and all that kind of stuff.
Yep.
I'm, I'm concerned about their wellbeing.
Good point.
Yep, they're beautifully taken for, cared for.
All right, counsel. We want to move to approve or deny that request?
I'll move to approve with everything stated. Ken?
I'll second then.
I'll second Ken's motion either way.
I have motion in a second to, uh, allow the seven dogs. Further discussion.
And you want that to con, meaning that
What's the condition?
Not no longer able to be replaced?
With the discussion we have here, yes. Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Keep your dogs. Oh, item D.
You got two.
Yeah, it's D, not you, not you.
Oh, yeah, you can go.
Oh, yeah.
You're done.
Yep.
Yeah, you have D and E. I just want to make sure the numbers, I have the right ones.
I don't know what to say about these either. I mean, three, I understand, and we have always approved three, so I would move to approve item E to the three dogs. Now, four cats?
They're all inside.
That's the one thing with cats is they're inside.
I'm okay with that.
Do you want to move to approve D and E or?
I'll approve E.
E, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion.
Okay, is E the dogs?
Three dogs.
E is three dogs.
Okay, so Mike?
E is three dogs. Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. And then item D for the four cats.
Mike doesn't want, doesn't like the cats.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
They all have the same understanding once, you know, some pass.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Four to one. All right, item.
Just to, on that note, we are going to look at that ordinance because it's just a
It needs to be seriously.
When you're starting to do more exceptions to it than, than those are actually following it, then I think it's time to revisit it and determine what is in the best interest.
We've always said we like when they come and ask, so why would we change the ordinance?
If you don't have to change the ordinance, but I'm just suggesting if it's time, you can review it and you might not change anything.
You know, I think you need to review it because in her letter she brought up, um,
Possibly more.
You could have up to ten. You know, it's, it's how you look at it because, you know, when it comes to dogs and cats, this is what you can have. But then you can have two lizards and three frogs and, you know what I mean? That's why the ten was kept in there, I believe. But I think we need to define that better.
But it does not mean that you have to, uh, change anything either, Frank. I mean, that's.
I'm happy when people come and ask instead of finding a different situation, you know, or happening upon it.
Most of them, we, most of them, we happen to come across it and then they come here. Well, yeah, that, that's the reality, but that's.
All right, yeah, we'll look into that anyway, so.
Just a FYI for you, um, on a county level, they look at it as animal units. And, and one animal unit can be equal to a cow, um, two dogs, six chickens, stuff. Okay, let's change that because I do want a cow. And some chickens.
It's only because you want to smoke them.
The ordinance, the city ordinance.
Yeah, I'm neat as the idea on here. Well, you deal with a lot of different sized things.
City ordinance allows chicken coops.
No, it doesn't.
They haven't been removed. Or was it removed?
Mike, don't even bring that up, please.
An ag or residential, you can, yes.
Item B.
Well, you want a cow.
Item B, hiring cleaning company for city hall.
All right, Council Mayor. Due to the passing of, uh, uh, previous employee, um, who we used to clean here for the city every day, um, it worked out okay because of the, the winter we had with hardly plumb snow, so we did throw some, uh, maintenance workers up here to do that. Now, being down one and also with the summer and, and the spring workload, it's getting harder and harder. We knew at the time that me and the two supervisors felt this was a good time to, to reevaluate what that looks like here at, uh, city hall for cleaning. One was, do we continue on with where we're at, you know, trying to find a part-time cleaner to do that, or is it time to look at hiring it out? Uh, we went down the road of trying to find a part-time cleaner. We, we put, posted it out there. I think in the information that we shared with you is we had three candidates and, um, one wasn't a good fit, two didn't show up, so. And at, at the end, that was, that was kind of a dead end for us. So then we, um, went down the road of actually putting an RFP together, sent it out. Dale and Zach actually did physical tours at, out here with them, walked around, showed them what, what needed to be done. They got a good understanding of it. In the end, we only, I think they had four people that visited, one didn't even incline to meet. So we got quotes from really two companies. One is, um, Wiseman Cleaning. They, they were a little bit higher. It's the PD's preferred choice, uh, because they clean at Sartell and they're not and are already CGIS, CGIS certified. What that means is that they can be in, um, they pass certifications to be able to be in the PD for, and Tony can explain it if you need it, but. ServiceMaster was, is low. Um, that's who the, we are recommending for the council to consider. They are not CGIS certified, but they will, and PD has agreed to work with them. Lisa's the one that runs that program, so. All of my staff is CGIS certified. We have to sit online and take a thirty-five, forty-minute class and pass that, just so that we take that liability out. We, we did weigh even the possibility of looking at a full-time, but there's just not enough work here to do, to do that. Could we make them do other cleaning? Sure. I think someday when the public safety facility and city hall expansion, if that's where it's going forward, when that's all completed, I think that's a really good time to start thinking about it because of the added square footage. But for this time right now, I think it's better off that where we're at here. Trying to juggle between working in here in the building, and I'm sure the city hall staff will say, well, it's fine, you know, my guys are up here during regular work hours, but when you're trying to do the cleaning and especially the vacuum with anything noise and working around people. So ideally, when Jerry was here, he was here early in the morning, four o'clock, and worked till about nine, eight-thirty, so he got all of his noisy stuff out of the way and staff did see him, you know, occasionally, but. So typically, when you're going to have that big of a building down the road, to be able to maintain that's probably going to be close to six, seven, eight-hour day. You know, and just taking care of all that, um, to be working during regular work hours is, um, going to be difficult. And then you can try to find somebody that's going to say, okay, I'm going to work midnight to six in the morning or eight in the morning or whatever. Uh, it's going to be difficult to find those people. So my, um, my suggestion is that ServiceMaster's got a great track record with us for the last couple of years since COVID, doing the park buildings. Uh, it's a fair price. Uh, they are willing to, this is their price coming in. Once they, if they get it and they come in and they start to see some economy of scale, they will sit down and visit with us. And if they see, oh, we're, instead of being here for two and a half hours with two people, we're here for two hours with, with two people, they'll, they'll come back to us and reduce that, so. It'll be a, it'll be a start because everybody's level of cleaning between those two companies, they might think that they need to be spent eight hours here total in a day. One might say it's seven hours. But till you get here and actually physically do the work, then you'll start to see where that's actually at, so. So my recommendation would be is to move forward with ServiceMaster for this year. Um, the total price is forty-five, forty-five, sixty a month. Obviously, we're almost halfway through, through a year, so. I'm not worried about the, the budget end of it because where Jerry's salary was at, that we saved. I think we'll be okay there. And then let's reevaluate it here in like three, four months, see where they're at. And.
What's the contract say, Bill, as far as, uh, I say tomorrow, somebody comes in and says, I'd like to have that job and we know them and we hire them. We, we hire the old fire chief from Wake Park, you know, and we say, I mean, what's he out on it?
It, we don't have that yet. I can certainly do that, but I would, I would say thirty days would notice would be appropriate, so. So that's, that would be my suggestion at this point. It would be nice to get this started sooner than later so that I can get. Well, Phil's basically the man, the guy that's up here, right? I think is.
I like Phil.
Well, I know you do. But I even talked to Phil today and he goes, he doesn't mind it, but he goes, it just takes up so much of his time and he's not doing his other duties that, so those all get pushed back. Because the other guys are on the streets now, so he's the guy that's taken care of up here. So. That's my suggestion. If anybody's going to either, yeah.
Does ServiceMaster provide their own equipment or cleaning things, or do we provide that for them?
No, they, they provide their own stuff.
They're going to provide their own?
Yep, and I don't know exactly. Yep, and I don't know exactly.
Extra costs or is that included?
No, that's included. And there's certain chemicals and I asked Zach that, but he didn't get, did that before he left on vacation. So I think they bring some of their own chemicals in because they work with it versus, so there's going to be some sort of cost savings there too. I can't put a number to it exactly at this point, but this would be at least a good trial for us to try and see.
Now, was Ku, uh, Mr. Kuukkuk, was he a full-time employee?
Part-time.
Part-time? Okay.
Counsel, your wishes on the cleaning service?
Move to approve Service Master?
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Approve bills.
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. That's all I got. Uh, Sean, do you have anything?
I don't think so.
Dave?
No, sir.
Phil?
Phil, I got something for you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. In the roundabout here, what's happening in Angus Acres and why weren't the people notified what's going on?
They digging holes in the street or something, Mike, or what?
This, it's.
There could be more than holes in the street.
It's, um, Intrepid Fiber. They can put, they're putting fiber in right away.
How come they couldn't spend a half hour with the citizens out there and explain to?
We were told that they were going to send out notifications. We were told that they were going to send out notifications to the citizens and it sounds like they did not.
You were told, but the citizens out there were.
We were told.
They were going to send notices to the citizens out there and they didn't.
I tell you, when you got the notices, when the flags were going in the ground. And said, please call this number, but the neighbors are going nuts because most of it's front yard project. All the utilities are in their rear, most of them. And now are they going to be putting terminals, flat box or what else?
We don't have a lot of input into that, Mike.
What do you say to the?
They have to follow the ordinance and that's what they have. That's their job.
Well, that's why I think they should have had.
No, it's, it, they're, they're putting conduit in. They said there's no above-ground boxes. It's all in-ground and they'll be right behind them pulling fiber. It's going to be throughout the city. Uh, there was over thirty permits that they're going to be pushing through to us. We just met with them today. We will make sure before we sign those permits that they have to notify, so we'll get.
I will get in contact with them and let them know that.
We need to change the ordinance so they have something to follow.
We just did. We did.
Well, they're on city property and on public right of way.
Public right of way, you got.
They can't come in my neighborhood then because I own three feet.
You own part of the cit- street. I have to pay rent to Rick every year.
That was just, I, the neighbors are slamming me, so.
Nope, well, I'll make sure that they get something out to citizens in some fashion.
Well, they got their little flyer from them finally.
Okay.
Last week, last Friday, Thursday, when they started putting the flags on the ground.
Did it get mailed to you or on your door?
Huh?
Mailed or on your door?
It was on the door.
So is this going to be citywide?
Yes.
And I, any idea how long it's going to take?
I wouldn't anticipate. They will be here all summer.
Yeah, it's, it's, well, they're, they're going overhead too, so there's certain areas where they're pulling wire on poles too, so. It's, it's a mismatch all over the city.
Who's the company?
Intrepid.
Intrepid?
Intrepid Fire.
So will they be hiring that out?
Oh.
Fiber optics or are they going to be bringing their own, a new competitor for Comcast and?
Yep.
It is.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yep.
Then competition is always better for us.
It is. It's just the process of getting through it is not always.
It's going to be very painful.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, people were complaining to me, so I said, I'd bring it to you and.
And how long do I need to keep those damn little flags in my yard?
They're only, the job is over with.
How do I know when they're done?
Oh, no.
Forty-eight hours.
Yeah, forty-eight hours and they have to be done with their job or working on it.
Well, you're right. It was last Thursday and Friday that they first started this around that corner.
John, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Chief?
No, sir.
Chief? Oh, all right. Nobody has anything else. We are adjourned at seven oh four.